Look, face.
Our invocation will be by chaplain Dan Moore with the Delaware Police Department.
Let us pray. Lord God Almighty, I come before you today with a bowed and humbled heart. I come with gratitude and thanksgiving for your mercy, your love, and your grace. Today, Lord, we stop to remember, remember on the anniversary of a day that brought such unbelievable sorrow, pain, and suffering to our land. Lord, we pray today for the protection and the security of our land and our leaders. Today, from the first responders to those heroic citizens, we pray that you would grant them peace and grant them grace for sometimes and oftentimes they suffer in silence. Lord, we ask you to fill the arms of mothers that were left empty. Heal the hearts of fathers whose ears strain to hear the fading frolic and laughter of children that are no more. We ask you to wrap your arms of love around those that lost husbands and wives, children, parents, family, and friends. Lord, let this day stand to remind us of the worst in men's hearts left unattended. But let us also remember this day as a time that will celebrate the good that is in men's hearts as we love one another. Thank you for your sovereign grace that helped us to endure what we thought would be impossible. Thank you, Lord, for your touch on our lives. Today, we pray that we would always remember this day with love and compassion one toward another, that we would grieve with those who are still grieving, share memories with those who cannot forget. And Lord, draw strength from the brave men and women that rushed into harm's way in order to save others. Let us always be reminded of your faithfulness and your love. Today, we also take the time to pray for a speedy recovery and healing to those that were in the past of a terrible storm, Hurricane Irma. Today, Lord, I ask that your omniscient eye would watch over us. Your omnipotent hand protect us. In your unfailing love and mercy, comfort all of us. Guide us in our affairs, and may you ever watch over our city that it would be safe. Protect our first responders, and we'll always give you the honor and the glory you're entitled to for your basket in your precious name. Amen.
Our pledge will be led tonight by Chief John Donahue.
Our pledge will be to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And our national anthem will be sung by Haysingers.
Oh, sing can you see by the dawn's early light? One so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming. Whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? For the broad thoughts we watched were so gallantly streaming. How long and forever we shall be together in your eyes? That our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the home?
Color guard, order, arms. Left, face. Forward march.
Thank you, and I would like to thank all that helped out tonight, our Haysingers, our chief, our chaplain, and our color guard tonight was both fire and police department of the city. Please be seated. And I also want you to take notice of the flags on the back of the wall. One is a flag of honor, list is, list all the names of those who lost their life on 911. The other one is the flag of heroes, list all the names of the first responders. And with that, I'll do roll call. Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. Keller?
Here.
Mr. Browning?
Here.
Mr. Rohr?
Here.
Mr. Hellinger?
Here.
Vice Mayor Shaffer?
Mayor Riegel?
Here.
Item six is the approval of the motion summary of the regular meeting of council held August 28, 2017, as recorded and transcribed. What's the wish of council?
Move for approval, second.
I have a motion by Mr. Shaffer, a second by Mr. Hellinger. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shaffer?
Yes.
Mayor Riegel? Yes, motion carries. Item seven on the agenda is the consent agenda. If you'll please read this into the record.
Item A, acceptance of the motion summary for the planning commission meeting held on August 2, 2017. Item B, resolution number 17-55, a resolution authorizing the city manager to renew an agreement with the Ohio Department of Public Safety Bureau of Motor Vehicles, BMV, allowing the Delaware Police Department electronic access to salvage tire. Item C, resolution number 17-56, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor for tax year 2017, budget year 2018.
Thank you. What is the wish of council for the consent agenda?
Move for approval of consent agenda.
Second.
The motion by Mr. Shaffer, a second by Mrs. Keller. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shaffer?
Yes.
And Mayor Riegel? Yes, motion carries. Item seven is time set aside for letters, petitions, or public comments for anything that is not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to come forward at this time? Okay, if you'll come forward to the table. And please your name and address for the record, please.
My name is David Soliday, 472 Durham Lane in Delaware.
And I'm Stephanie Gregory, 110 Tabalor Loop, Delaware, Ohio.
You can sit down and just pull that microphone down. You'll have to stand up.
We're here with Sustainable Delaware, Ohio. And I have a special invitation for city council that Stephanie is passing around, and I'd be glad to read so that everyone can hear it. Are you up for the challenge? SDO encourages Delaware City Council to explore new and better ways to live. The No Impact Experiment is a one-week card. It is a chance for you to see what a difference No Impact Living can have on your quality of life. It's not about giving up creature comforts, but an opportunity for you to test whether the modern conveniences you take for granted are actually making you happier or just eating away at your time and money. This experiment was inspired by Colin Bevan's one-year experiment with No Impact Living in New York City. The No Impact Experiment is an eight-day version of Colin and his family's year-long experiment. Each day of the program has its own theme and challenge that builds on the next so that by the end of the week, you are virtually living No Impact. The daily challenges are as follows. Sunday, October 1st, consumption. So in this day, don't buy anything new except for food. Monday, October 2nd is trash. So in this day, try not to create any trash. Someone suggested you might even carry around the trash that you generate to see how much that feels. Tuesday, October 3rd, transportation. So only transport yourself through environmentally friendly ways such as biking, walking, public transportation, or carpooling. Wednesday, October 4th is food day. So try to eat only local food and cut down on your meat consumption. Thursday, October 3rd, description, cut back on your electricity use or stop it altogether. Friday, October 6th is water. Try to cut back on your water use. Saturday, October 7th is giving back. So give back to your community, do some volunteer work. And then Sunday, October 8th is the Eco Sabbath. The description for that is unplug and reflect. You and the environment take a break. We believe it is not only possible, but is necessary to discover ways to live that are better for both people and the planet. The Week is particularly powerful when communities of people take on this challenge together. The No Impact Week is an immersive educational program that empowers participants to, one, experience how lower impact living can benefit the planet, the people, and the individual, too. And two, create a community that is engaged and excited about sustainability and involvement in the environmental movement. SDO is planning several public events for the week. Will you accept the challenge? You can sign up at our website, sustainabledelaware.org. You can expect to receive weekly updates from us, daily updates during No Impact Week. You'll also be encouraged to share your own reflections on this experience with us via email or social media. We're all in this together, and we can all learn from each other.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to come forward at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll do committee reports. Mr. Jones?
I have none tonight.
Mrs. Keller?
I have none, thank you.
Mr.?
None.
Mr. Hellinger?
Nothing. No.
Okay. We'll move on to introductions. We have a few from Public Works.
Yeah, we have two of the three, I think, believe. Bill, would you like to introduce?
Really good to play with two time young gentlemen and new members to our team. And let me give a little background on them. First, Jonathan Owen, he's from Calvary, Ohio. He's one of the management team up here. He is a graduate from the Ohio State University in 2009 and received his P E in 2013. He comes to us with eight years of really valuable experience working with private consultant and with real expertise in hydraulics, hydraulic design. And I think just recently, the events down in Harvey saw how important it is to understand rainfall, rainfall events, and just recently, yesterday with the other hurricane, Irma. So he brings a real solid background in that, and we really need to add that to our team. He is working on our land development team. He's, he has filled the second position that you approved with this year to add more capacity and expertise in that area. With what we write, is married to his wife, Joni, I think, I see in the audience, and their four-year-old Ruth. And I'm gonna say Joni makes the best homemade cinnamon rolls in the world. Without being alone, Jonathan's been working with us for a really long time. Yes, sure, thanks for that. And just one, my thanks, and all of the opportunity to work here, the opportunity to live in the community. We've been here for, I think, six weeks, and it's been nothing but a pleasure. I really appreciate it. Living in Delaware is great, Tracy. Thank you.
Well, welcome, but I think we should be the judge whether Joni's cinnamon rolls are the best.
Next, I have Daniel, my boy, who is by Nathan. And Nathan is from, like you must say, Engle, Ohio, but it's not Engle, Ohio. It's Archibald, Ohio. And he is a graduate of Prime University in 2011. And just recently, he received his professional registration. And he's joining our Capitol project team. So we threw him right out there, I think, in the first week or so. Tonight, we're working on 23 with the pavement lifting project. George, familiar with that, where we had the pavement sinking. And we are in final stages of lifting it, injecting polymer into the ground, stabilizing it. So right away, we threw him right into a difficult situation. And we put him on our sidewalks project, which that's known for, we're going to have to work with residents and folks that were having to fix the sidewalks. He's also working on the west central sidewalk, we've seen the hot section right out, as well as our resourcing initiative this year. So he's very, very busy, very aggressive, brings together some real expertise to us. He had, he worked for City Design for a year, and then he worked for Iowa Transportation Group for five years. So he has that expertise coming in, helping out with our bridge, or his house, some of our bridge issues for us. Just brings a whole lot of expertise, and both of them together, this new millennial generation, brings so much more on a technical, technological approach, department approach things. So we'll, we'll have Nathan in our team. Nathan, he's very excited.
Hi, it's a pleasure to work here. I love coming to work every day. Some days are harder than others, but I really enjoy it, and thanks for having me on your guys.
Welcome.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Item 10 on the agenda is a proclamation recognizing National Preparedness Month.
Is Chief Donahue, yes, he is here. Chief Pedjnowski as well?
Whereas National Preparedness Month creates a significant opportunity for every citizen of the city of Delaware to learn about ways to prepare for all types of emergencies, from potential terrorist attacks to natural disasters. It's been a multiple example. Whereas emergency preparedness is a responsibility of every resident and whereas we all take a few simple steps in order to make preparedness a priority in our community. Whereas federal, state, and local officials, private sector are working to ensure, prevent, and respond to all types of emergencies. Whereas we observe National Preparedness Month, disasters don't plan ahead, prepare. I urge adults and children to participate in citizens' preparedness activities and to review the Department of Homeland Security ready campaign websites. Now therefore, I, Carolyn K. Riegel, Mayor of the City of Delaware, do hereby proclaim September 2017 a National Preparedness Month. And I call upon all people of the city of Delaware to engage in preparedness actions at home, work, business, school, and at some research.
Thank you. And as you reflect on September 11, 2001, it's a very solemn day. But also, as we look at the events that are occurring today down in South Florida, past two weeks down in Texas, I think it's evident the need for us, all of us, to be prepared. And at times, we often think it's not going to impact us. But I think as we look around the room today, and the discussions that have gone on throughout the weekend, we all realize that we've had somebody potentially impacted by the storms over the past three weeks. So it does impact us, and it certainly can impact us. Nine years ago, we had a hurricane, Ike, come through our city just, well, actually during the pandemic. So it can happen here, and it will happen here again. So I ask the all of our citizens to be prepared.
Sure. I think, just to build on what Chief Donahue said, it just started with individuals. So it starts with one person needing to control their 20s feet and know what their preparedness plan is, and then what their family's preparedness plan is, then maybe their neighbors, and their community, and their city. So we can't be successful unless individuals are staying successful, unless we're able to.
And now, for our next presentation, we have the Delaware County Board of Elections. If you'd like to come forward to the table.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Attorney, good to see you. Hope all's well. Just quickly, Steve Cuckler, 1644 Shell Run Drive, Delaware, Ohio. I'm a, one of the members of the Board of Elections. And Carol Young from our office is giving you some information about some upcoming changes to our polling locations. Ally Sewal is here to my right, who's gonna, doing the brunt of the discussion today. And then, of course, Carla Heron, our director, who most of you already know. Just a real quick overview, right? So countywide, we have 158 precincts with 48 polling locations. When I was on city council a long time ago, 14 years ago, we had only 65 precincts, right? So it shows you, just in short time, how many, how much we've grown countywide. So in order to get precinct locations, right, the Board of Elections doesn't own any buildings or territory or lands or anything of that nature. So we rely on the good graces of churches, community organizations, governmental organizations, et cetera, to have our polling locations for Election Day. And so we've had a few changes here in Delaware that we thought it would be wise to give you all, the city council, update about some of those changes as no doubt either have or will, you know, hear about them. So we just want to make sure you guys are up to speed first. So I'll turn it over to Ally to go over those specifics.
Mayor, council members, administrators, and residents of the community, we appreciate you giving us a few minutes of your time. The Board of Elections-
Ally, can I stop you one second? You have to give me your address for the-
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
582 Broadhampton Lane, Westerville, Ohio, 43082.
Get that, yeah?
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. There are changes that come along in a community that's growing, and there's always changes that we cannot necessarily control. We do have some closings of some locations. One of them is because it is a school, and because elections have become so high-profile, they prefer us not there. We also have a location that's been sold, and they cannot make a commitment to the next couple of years of elections. And we have one building also that's having some remodeling done. So at that time, when we had three locations that were going to be closing, it gave us an opportunity to look forward and see what we have in the community. We, last election had, at the YMCA, we had gone to the Armory, which gave us more room. So at this same time, we decided to take advantage of that and to look at what we could do for the community and for Delaware and the city. Our map up here divides it kind of in four quadrants. We actually did end up closing eight locations. Asbury, UMC, District Tech Center, Valley View, Delaware Bible, Mingo Rec Center, Williams Street, Delaware District Library, and New Beginnings United Methodist Church. The locations that we have added are the Delaware County Fairgrounds, the Fraternal Order of Eagles, and the Willis Education Center. As you can see up there, we've kind of divided the area into four quadrants. Each large quadrant does have one major location, but in the city, we still do have three locations. One of the concerns at a few of the locations was parking. Some of our smaller ones in the city, there was problems for parking for poll workers that were working there, and voters that wanted to just be able to come in, vote, and leave. And that was an issue for some of the locations. So when we put all of these ideas together, it seemed like a time to restructure, reassign maybe some people, and go ahead and get some locations that work a little bit better for the community. One of the things is we're wanting to make sure the voters know where their change is. Every voter was sent a card telling them of their new voting location. We will try to get on the Lee and Darren Show again and give a plug for that. We will get in the newspaper also. We will try to have every resident know ahead of time. We will have some that maybe will not, been informed some reason or another. We will have signs at the old locations directing them where to go. One of the other things we've also looked into is Willis is on a direct route, fixed route, for data, and so is the fairgrounds. The Fraternal Order of Eagles is not, but it's very close. So the new locations are larger locations. Poll workers do like, enjoy being in a little bit larger locations, but there's feasibility for additional parking. And that is something that is, working for the Board of Elections, we want to feel everyone has that feasibility to go and park and vote and not have to go around the block or something. So that was something that people really brought to our attention. But overall, it's just because we needed to change three locations anyway. It was time to reevaluate the ones we had, make a better use of the YMCA as the Armory. And this is the configuration we have come up with. Does anyone have any questions?
So you are still using the Armory, or that's-
Yes, we went from the YMCA to the Armory at the last election, but we didn't change anything. Now we have added another precinct there because we're able to. Well, our director, Carla Heron, she lives in a precinct that actually, she's on the high end. So she's been moved, some of the people, most of the people in her area are southern anyway, and they would vote at YMCA. So some of those people that maybe were a little further away have been moved closer to a voting location. It always falls into that line, but quite a few areas it does. We tried to follow the population of that area. One other thing, the fair's coming up. I think some of you might be on fair boards. And we're also asked that at the one building we're going to be using for the fairgrounds, that during the fair, we put a sign up saying this will be a voting location this November. Soon as we get a mock-up on that, we will give that to the Delaware County Fair Board to see if we can place that. Any other questions?
Any questions? All right, thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much, and we appreciate it. And if we need anything else, or you need anything else from us, if you could let us know. Would it be possible to get something put on the website showing voters that if they, not necessarily the map, but that some changes have been made? If you did not receive a card, to go on the website or to call us, and we can walk you through it, and we can help anybody that needs to know where they're gonna be voting.
Yep, if you can do that, we will.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, we're gonna jump down to item 12. So Elaine, if you'll please read in the record, consideration of ordinance. It's just happened, I apologize. Kim?
Consideration of ordinance number 17-61, and ordinance amending the Neglect of Companion Animals section of the Animal and File Chapter of the General Offenses Code.
Am I up?
Yes.
Ever since Dean yelled at me, I wait till I'm called on. Madam Mayor, members of council, this should not come as a huge surprise to you. This is the draft that we preliminarily went over with you for discussion purposes at our last meeting. I think the consensus at that meeting was to go ahead and put it on the agenda, get the ball rolling, and accept comments and feedback from all comers, so to speak. So this draft is exactly the same draft that you saw before. I would anticipate that there could be changes made between readings, but we need to start somewhere. So I'd be happy to walk you through it or answer any questions. But again, there's nothing different than what we kind of, when Chris Ballard presented last meeting.
Well, for the sake, I think we have quite a few people here in the audience for this if you want to walk through it, because I don't know that they've all seen it.
I'd be happy to. Councilman Jones brought this forward at the request, I believe, of some of his constituents. We have an existing ordinance called the Neglect of Companion Animals section. And looking at that ordinance, there is a great deal of protection in there, but we wanted to add additional protections and clarity to that. So we specifically do mention tethering in there, which was not in the existing ordinance. We provided a definition of tethering. We also added some additional things for which, right now, you already cannot fail to provide reasonable movement and exercise, freedom from mud, standing water, fecal matter, and shelter and light. But we also added they have to be able to get away from insects and rodent infestations because that was in some of the sample drafts that were reviewed. So we added that criteria as something that someone could be cited for. So we added that criteria as something that someone could be cited for. We also talked about the tethering has to allow sufficient length to allow freedom of movement and preventing choking. Before the amendment that we were proposing, there was no prohibition against choking, and we put a strict liability on the choking part of the ordinance. Finally, we increased the penalties for repeat offenders. And the only other thing that probably would be new is we referenced if your animal, if your neglect causes serious physical harm, that's already defined in the code, we elevated that to the most serious misdemeanor, a first-degree misdemeanor. So that was new as well.
Okay.
Do you want me to talk about what we didn't put in there, just for the sake of conversation? There are, in looking at the samples that we researched and were provided, there are a number of provisions that are, appear in some of the, either adopted in other cities or proposed in other cities but not adopted. And there are provisions that we felt were difficult to, impossible to enforce, so we, at least with our initial draft, chose not to include them. One example of that is a timeframe. I think some of them say you have to, if they're more than six hours, they have to have an hour break in between. That kind of provision, while it sounds very protective of animals, is impossible for us to enforce, because you would have to have your code enforcement officer or police officer or somebody from the city basically sit there and observe for the six hours to make sure that the timeframe wasn't violated. And that's just never, doesn't happen. We have the same problem with our parking enforcement for two-hour parking. So we did not, at this time, decide to put that in there. Another section that we've seen in a lot of the sample ordinance is a length of rope, a length of a tether that's allowed, but depending on how it's written, it just seemed kind of hard to figure out and measure, and it's based on the dog size, and you got to, it just didn't seem to be correlated to what the goal of the ordinance is. And the final thing that we've seen in some ordinances that we didn't incorporate in our draft is there are some references to weather service advisories for really cold or really hot weather. That becomes a question of enforceability with intent, because I can speak from personal experience, I never look at weather advisories, so you'd have a very hard time proving that someone saw that. And therefore, you would never be able to prosecute them for failing to let their dog inside if there was a warning, because they could simply say, "I didn't watch the weather that day." So we didn't put that in there. However, we think that the protections that are in there, causing physical harm to the animal and failure to provide shelter and things, would provide similar protections. So that's what we decided at this point not to put in there, but I tried to give an explanation, because obviously you are the legislative body, and if instructed, we could put it in there. And I think, in addition, you might have gotten some information from the Chief about this, I don't know if you want to hear from him too, but that's kind of what I have.
Sure. See if you want to come forward at this time.
I would concur with Darren's summary. I think the ordinance as written is enforceable and makes sense, but I do have concerns with trying to enforce hours. We do chalk tires with two-hour violations. I'm not sure we could chalk paws. So we'd have a hard time tracking hours, and if we did, whether that would be an appropriate use of manpower. The only thing in there I would suggest we look at is the word sufficient in the length of the tether can sometimes be interpreted differently. So my only suggestion might be, we look at either like a minimum, minimum length, and then you have, you know, some of the other requirements that dare not be obstructions. You also have the, I guess, if we just did a minimum length or some other specified length that doesn't become argumentative in court, would be my suggestion.
Okay.
And just to clarify Chief's comments, we do chalk tires. What I was referring to is sometimes people get smart, and they roll their car up a few feet, and then the chalk moves. So that's the difficulty, because people do. Oh, I don't know, in theory, they do that.
And we're okay with writing those tickets.
Yeah.
Just if you park downtown, just in the morning.
Thank you. Any questions for Chief or Darren? Mr. Jones, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, I just, I'd like to hear from some people who came by.
All right. Is there someone in the audience that would like to come forward on this subject at this time? Okay, we'll start with you. And as you sit down, of course, you'll need to give us your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Vicki Deisner, D-E-I-S-N-E-R. My address is 824 South Front Street, Columbus, Ohio, 43206. Mayor Wrigley, and distinguished members of the Delaware City Council, I am Vicki Deisner, the Midwest Legislative Director of the American Society for the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals, the ASPCA. The ASPCA, whose mission is to provide effective means for the prevention of animal cruelty throughout the nation, along with our more than 100,000 Ohio supporters, commends the Delaware City Council for considering legislation that would address the cruel tethering of dogs in the city of Delaware. Across the United States, millions of dogs endure their entire life confined outdoors by chains, affixed to collars and staked to the ground. Risk to the public safety and the inhumane treatment of dogs are widely viewed as the two primary problems with continuous tethering of dogs, according to many studies and surveys of federal, state, and local public health and safety agencies, animal control agencies, veterinarians, animal behaviorists, professional organizations, animal welfare organizations, law enforcement officials, and the public. Laws that prohibit tethering or chaining have been shown to reduce dog attacks, dogfighting, and cruelty complaints. Attacks on people by tethered dogs in the United States and elsewhere in the world have been documented and studied through many different methods and in many disciplines. A major conclusion is that dogs tethered for long periods of time can become highly aggressive. When confronted with a perceived threat, dogs respond accordingly to their fight-or-flight instinct. A chained dog, unable to take flight, often feels forced to fight and attacks any unfamiliar animal or person who wanders into his or her territory. The American Veterinary Medical Association and the American Society of Plastic Surgeons have teamed up to promote responsible dog ownership, pointing out that tethering dogs contributes to aggressive behavior, and have stated, "Confin your dog in a fenced yard or dog run when it is not in the house. Never tether or chain your dog, because this can contribute to aggressive behavior." Dogs are social animals who thrive on interaction with humans and other animals. While people with large parcels of land and those without fenced-in yards use tethering as a means of keeping dogs on their property, this confinement causes the animals a great deal of physical and psychological pain. In addition to being deprived of socialization, tethered dogs are often the victims of abuse and neglect, suffering from sporadic feedings, empty water bowls, inadequate veterinarian care, and exposure to weather extremes. They are forced to eat, sleep, urinate, and defecate in the same confined area, which goes against their natural instincts. Tethered dogs also suffer severe neck injuries from collars that have become embedded in their skin, some even strangled to death when chains become entangled with other objects. Chained in place, dogs are also helpless to defend themselves against abusive people, stray dogs, and wild animals who may invade their space. In addition, unaltered chained females are likely to attract strays, leading to unwanted litters. Tethered dogs run in a high risk of becoming stir-crazy due to the inability to release their energy and socialize with others. With dogs, boredom often leads to frustration, which in turn often leads to aggression. An additional contributor to aggression is that, given only a small area in which that animal dwells, tethered dogs are known to become irrationally protective of that area, because it is essentially their whole world. Studies have shown that chained or tethered dogs are nearly three times more likely to bite than a dog who is not chained or tethered. The ASPCA respectfully asks the members of the Delaware City Council to implement an ordinance to restrict tethering in Delaware and delay the implementation of the ordinance for a specified time, thus giving the city time to provide notice of the requirements of this legislation to the public. The ASPCA would also recommend that the first offense be a warning to the canine owner to provide for education and encourage compliance. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your efforts in promoting legislation that would address the cruel tethering of dogs in the city of Delaware. I thank you, and would be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there someone else that would like to come forward? Yes.
Good evening. I usually have to stand, so I'm excited about the chair. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of the City-
Name and address for the record, please.
Pardon me. My name is Cory Roscoe. I'm at 381 South Grant Avenue, Columbus, 43215. Thank you for your time tonight. My name is Cory Roscoe. I'm the Ohio State Director of the Humane Society of the United States, the nation's largest and most effective animal protection organization. On behalf of HSUS and our Ohio members, I'm here to support the city in crafting meaningful and enforceable language to address constant and cruel tethering of dogs. And thank you so much for your time tonight and considering this issue. Updating the code is important for several reasons. As Vicki with the ASPCA pointed out, these animals that are constantly and consistently tethered up outside are often lacking veterinary care, they have to worry about their water bowls being turned over, maybe lack of food, or bugs, or unwholesome food, obviously they have to deal with severe weather conditions. But we also know that it's important for the safety of the community to have less dogs on chains. Dogs are social animals, and when they're socially isolated from other animals and from people, they can become aggressive. Again, as Vicki mentioned, the American Veterinary Medical Association even warns to not chain your dog outside, because it can lead to aggressive behavior. Chained dogs often contribute to nuisance complaints, you know, the barking dog in the yard, that impacts the quality of life for all residents in that community. Dogs who are bored tend to bark more often than dogs who are in the company of people or other animals. This creates some enforcement issues for those who get those calls. Now, regulations of this type aren't really meant to stretch manpower or already limited resources. We know that's a concern of the city. But to be honest, these types of complaints, like other nuisance calls, will be, you know, complaint-based. So, and when something like this gets implemented at first, you might see an uptick in complaints. But then, that will allow you to educate your residents. Once they go into compliance, you should see less complaints, because more of the city will be aware of it. Over a few months, those complaints tend to balance out. Neighbors, I mean, neighbors are not going to be calling on a little old lady who ties up her dog when she's gardening outside, but over time, you'll get to see who the chronic abusers of this will be, and you'll have more opportunities to educate them, offer compliance techniques. So I think it will level out after it's implemented. And of course, you know, laws are only as good as their enforcement, but this is not me, this type of restricted ordinance is not meant to punish your neighborhood, it's just to rise, raise the humane standards for everyone living in that neighborhood and create a safer community. So I think taking some steps in your city codes to address this is absolutely the right way to go. Now, there are some other things you could consider, where I know we talked about that you have to have shelter. Well, shelter is not defined, and I know you don't want to get too prescriptive with how you define shelter, but if you fall back on the state statutes, a tree could be considered shelter. So if you're don't, if you're not comfortable with having limitations on how long a dog could be chained up in a yard, perhaps you want to take it from a different angle and be a little more prescriptive about what you consider is appropriate shelter. The city of Cleveland, for instance, says dog shelter has to have four sides and a roof, and be certain amount of inches off the ground, and it has a whole list of what they consider to be dog shelter outside, which is more than a tree, which is- The way it's written in your state statute, I mean, your city ordinance, an overturned children's swimming pool could be considered shelter. So that might be one way of looking at it. And then we talked about the inclement weather, and people don't necessarily pay attention to weather advisories, but I don't know if you saw some of the news when Hurricane Harvey hit, and people's dogs were tied up outside, and the pictures of the floodwaters rising with the dogs still on their chains. So maybe this is not the talk, you know, tonight about inclement weather, maybe you want to bifurcate that out and come back to it. But the idea, I mean, we might get some severe weather, we certainly get snowstorms, and dogs could be outside, or if there is evacuation, we talked about disaster preparedness, could we address disaster preparedness with our pets, maybe in future meetings as well? So these are all different ways to get around creating more humane communities, or elevating the city of Delaware, to make your citizens more responsive to the care of their animals. These are not meant to punish anybody, it's just really to elevate the care standards of this fine community. And I'm here to help you do that, and if it means working at it from different angles and slowly building up the code, I'm willing to sit down with you and do that. You know, in Cincinnati, when they passed their restricted tethering ordinance, it wasn't anti-tethering, it was restricted, right? They put in some meaningful, enforceable restrictions. What they did to get to where they got to pass it, they created an animal task force. And that animal task force was a division of their Public Safety Committee, and it included the police chief, community stakeholders, the Humane Society, veterinarians, and together they came up with what is meaningful and enforceable, and that's how a city as large as Cincinnati was able to implement theirs last year. So that might be something, animal task force, we just need more stakeholders talking about this. We'd love to sit down with the police chief and discuss this. So if that's the one way to do it, we're willing to do that. We just don't want it, anything to be black and white, because we don't need, we don't need it to be black and white. We're all willing to, you know, listen and talk. So hopefully, we can just keep having those conversations and see what works best for the city, if it's a task force, if it's revisiting inclement weather, if it's talking about shelter, you know, any other way we could just, again, raise the humanity of the city. We're willing to do that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there someone else that would like to come forward at this time?
Good evening. My name is Dustin Nana. I live at 206 Silver Maple Drive, here in Delaware, Ohio. I'm coming to talk about this tonight, because I'm actually running for City Council this year, and I've talked to a few folks about this. And I actually really, really like, and it seems to me that people really like, the ordinance that your city attorney has put together, as written. I think it's going to be really hard to restrict tethering on the basis of time, because, like you said, you're going to have to sit up through a stopwatch, you know, how many hours has it been out here? I also think it's going to be a bad idea to restrict it. I think last time we were here, you guys talked about restricting it at night, period. I don't think that's a good idea either, because I think, as Mr. Rohr said, that would restrict him from letting his dog outside at 3:00 in the morning, and I don't think that's the intent of anybody here, but if you write that in the ordinance, that's in the ordinance. So just, like I said, through conversations with people, especially in my neighborhood, you know, I think that people are responsible, we would hope enough, with this ordinance against serious harm, to be able to tether their dogs responsibly and not have to, you know, have us out there saying, "Okay, well, your dog can't be out for longer than two hours," or this and that. I mean, it's pretty well laid out, you know, there can't be insects in the food, you know. I think adequate shelter is an enforceable term, but just wanted to come before council and the audience and express my concerns as a resident in the city of Delaware. That's all.
Thank you. Is there someone else that would like to come forward?
Hello. Shannon Ruff, 248 Westford Avenue, Delaware. As you know, I'm the one that sponsored this and got this all started, and the reason that I got it started is because the owners of, some of the owners of Delaware are not responsible enough due to the dog I walked past four times a day. It was still chained up, I've never seen her off, I've never seen anybody even out there. Obviously, she's getting good water some during the day, and I do go past quite often. Vicki and Cory both spoke about a lot of the things, reasons why we don't want them tied up 24/7. I wanted to let you know, I've talked to Ed Jamison, who is the Chief Animal Control Officer of Cleveland. They passed their ordinance three years ago. They do have the six hours a day, and he did tell me that that was one thing that he would not have in there, that it was hard to be policeable. But he did say that he really thought the 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM was definitely something that necessarily had to be in there, because it did cut down on nuisance calls. He said all great things about the bill. He, another thing that he didn't think was necessary is they have a 20-length chain in there- in their ordinance. He said that that definitely needed to be cut down to 15 because they have 32 feet lots. Those are the only two things that he said that he would change about the ordinance, that it's, it's been great having it, it's that they did have an influx of calls at the beginning, and now that it's kind of, you know, leveled out and it's actually been better. I also contacted their council cityman, Matt Zone, who is the one who sponsored this bill. He is going to gather some data and write a letter to you all about how it has improved and the, the, the good impact it's had on Cleveland. I also talked to Representative Barnes, who sponsored the law, the House Bill 94, in Ohio Senate, and he sent a letter. I emailed y'all late this afternoon. I didn't know if you got it or not, but if you need a copy, I can get that for you. So, another thing I was concerned about is when I watched the Columbus City Council meeting, they spoke of, you know, the dogfighting that they had in Columbus. If Columbus passes that, those dogfighters are going to be looking for a place to go, and they're going to target places that don't have anti-tethering laws. I think it's imperative that we have a 10:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. I think it's imperative that we also have something with severe weather. If you don't want to do like the severe weather, you know, alarms, set it for a certain degree. I saw one had a degree like below 32, they weren't allowed outside, below 85, they weren't tied outside. If that's a problem, then let's figure out a way to make it, make it happen. I don't think, I think it also needs to be in there if no owner is at home that, that you can't tie your dog out. Dogs can get, you know, tangled up and strangled if that happened. Another incident happened this week that, that made me realize that it was important also is, my dad had told me he saw raccoons around the neighborhood, and I never thought anything about it because I didn't see them, and my dog's a big dog, so I didn't, wasn't really worried about it. Tuesday morning, I woke, I let my dog out, went back in the house to get dressed, and I heard him barking. I look out the window, and he is face-to-face with a possum in my fenced-in backyard. I have no idea, I mean, it had to have crawled in some way, but the poor dog on the end of the street doesn't have a benefit of having somebody come to her, come to her when she's barking. I just, please, please, consider this. Thank you.
Is there someone else that would like to come forward? Are handouts appropriate?
Mm-hmm.
Hi. My name is Jana Cassidy, and my address is 4920 State Route 37 East, and that's in Delaware, Mayor Rigor, Riggle, excuse me, Vice Mayor Schaefer, and members of council. My name is Jana Cassidy, and I am the interim executive director for the Humane Society of Delaware County. I am here tonight to thank you for considering amendments to the city's neglect of companion animal ordinance and to include regulations of consistent or cruel tethering of dogs. The current law at the local and state levels stops short of protecting a companion animal from neglect and cruelty. There is little that a humane agent can do as long as the animal has access to food, water, and shelter. We know, in fact, that a tethered dog suffers mentally and physically. They get tangled, and they choke. They have embedded collars, and they hang themselves. Tethered dogs are victims of inadequate veterinary care, lack of exercise, and exposure to extreme temperatures. Frustrated and lonely and anxious, their only outlet is to bark. They become aggressive, and they can be a danger to the community. I am sure that you have all heard all the tethering statistics from a variety of sources, so I'm not going to talk about those tonight. What I would like to share with all of you is the experience of the Humane Society of Delaware County staff when we deal with these victims of tethering. They are typically tethered at the rear of a property. They are unwanted and forgotten. Imagine if you painted a picture in your head based on the following descriptions. The HSDC sees dogs of all sizes, shapes, and ages, and they have scars around their necks, where the collar or chain has been embedded, and it leaves the skin raw and sore. The hair does not grow back. The scar serves as a constant reminder to all of our staff of the dog's prior life and its torment, the countless days, weeks, months, and years that the animal suffered, and no one helped. Their paws and skin are burnt from a lack of a clean, dry place to lie. There's no grass. It was gone a long time ago. It's just dirt, it's mud, and it's waste, existing and smelling every single day, their own waste, and they have no place to go. When food comes, or if it comes, they have to stand in their own smelling waste while they eat their food. They have no escape. Skin disease, flea and tick infestations, they scratch and scratch and scratch until their skin is bleeding and raw. They're covered in mange, covered from head to toe to tail to paws. Their skin is crusty and oozing and raw. We can't tell the breed of a dog. We can't tell the color of its fur because there isn't any, not one patch of fur. Heartworm. It's a deadly disease that can easily be prevented with monthly treatment. And dental issues. Absent adequate mental stimulation and exercise, dogs may chronically chew on anything available, rocks, wood, metal, plastic, chewing until their teeth break off or they're ground down to the gums. Severe behavioral issues from obsessive pacing, licking and chewing, to serious aggressive issues. An amendment to ordinance number 1761 to minimize the tethering of dogs would help eliminate the suffering of dogs in the city of Delaware. It would also provide a peaceful night's sleep for the countless neighbors who have to listen to a frustrated, barking dog live its life at the end of a tether. The Humane Society of Delaware County appreciates the positive working relationship that we share with the city of Delaware and its community. We support a tethering restriction ordinance, and we are grateful for your consideration on this important topic. I'd be more than willing to entertain any questions you may have.
Any questions? Thank you. Is there someone else that would like to come forward at this time? We do have a public hearing set up for...
No, we didn't set yet.
Okay, so what do you... Absolutely.
Things came up in tonight's discussion that I think are important. I think overall, our goal here is to prevent abuse in black cat and disordinance is a good start. I think Vicki mentioned the idea of having potentially a first violation as a warning. I think that might make some sense because our goal here is to change people's behavior, not necessarily give them a ticket. And then I think Cory mentioned something about weather issues, and it seems to me there ought to be some way to put some language in here. You know, I'm not an expert on how to word it, but something to be affected, extreme temperatures and or the weather, that they need to be brought some shelter from that weather. Those are a couple of things that I think if we add to this would make it a little bit more protective, and it's still enforceable. We don't want to put things in here that we would have to enforce because they don't do that. Just a couple of thoughts.
Okay.
And I can, I was taking notes as well. Those are the two things that I thought would be pretty easy to incorporate, so Chris and I will see what we can do about a slightly revised draft for the next meeting. Because I don't think anything in that is particularly controversial, so I think we can do that.
You know, it's even when you're watching the news, when it's either really hot or really cold, they'll always tell you to pin your animals in. So there must be some magical number that they use.
I'll do, I'll do some playing around with it.
Okay. Thoughts from anyone else on council?
I noticed in the ordinance that was provided to us, someone emailed it to us, it's the ASPCA guidelines, that, like Kent said, there's weather-related language in here that we don't have in our current wording. Another thing I noticed was, in the ASPCA language, it talks about the length of the tether being one-eighth of the dog's body weight, and so I'm struggling with how to determine, like Chief also said, the length of the tether. Seems like that would be a difficult thing to determine with different dog sizes than if the dog is, if we do have an officer that responds in the field, how will they know what the dog's weight is to know what one-eighth of the dog's weight is? Just things that, just the, I'm struggling with some of the details, so I think that any combined effort that we could have to work with some of the experts in the field to nail down some of these details would be great.
And I, I think if we, we focus more on, and again, the, the core idea behind this is, is to make certain that there is a negligence and neglect on caring for animals, whether it's a dog or a cat or whatever. But could we, could we look on this a kind of a different way and define what neglect is, and then let that kind of be that overarching piece? Because it's pretty obvious, you know, what, what neglect is. I think you, and/or you can define what the symptoms of neglect are, and then kind of go at it from this way. Because we're being very prescriptive on, on items that look like they contribute to neglect, but we're focusing on tethering. I think maybe if we took a different approach, I'm not, I'm one to minimize the amount of ordinances we need to put in place. If we could put more of an overarching one in place, it could be applied if you had chickens. How can you...
Oh, no, chickens. Yeah, chickens.
I hear for you. So, but you know, there, there needs to be a way to define how that is and what, what proper care is versus negligence. Just something to think about.
Okay.
One thing to echo Councilman Helliger's comment, the serious physical harm definition would include, at least in my opinion, things like a collar that, over here testifying, the collars can become embedded in there. That would be a physical harm that involves acute pain of a duration that results in substantial time. So I think we, with our, not our existing ordinance, but our existing proposed revised ordinance, even though we don't say things like that, it does cover things like that or, or probably some weather-related things as well, but, you know, I was particularly struck by the embedded collar. I think that would be a serious physical harm that we would capture, sweep up with our broader language.
Okay. Any comments?
I agree with Councilman Helliger's approach on the whole, the drug aspect, as opposed to just absolutely...
Okay. All right, so I don't, even though our, our fact sheet says there's a public hearing, I think we removed it out of the consent agenda. So I think this is incorrect. We do not have a public hearing set up at this time.
Correct.
Even though your fact sheets all say it is.
Originally, that was the intention, but because there hadn't been discussion about what...
Right, took it out.
Yeah, so after tonight's meeting, if we get a revised draft back to you, you review it, and it's satisfactory, then we could set it. We just didn't want to set it ahead of time, not knowing what the final product was going to be.
So would we set it at our next meeting at the hearing date because we didn't put on for this one? Is that your...
Yeah, I guess I just want to make sure council knows what we're, what actually, what ordinance were, what changes we're making to the ordinance so that when we notice it...
Yeah, you two get together and revise it and set it out to council, and we can see it. If we're pretty comfortable with it, then we'll set the hearing at the next meeting.
Okay, for the first meeting in a, be the first meeting in October.
Right. Is that all?
Doable.
Okay.
Yeah, Chris is right on this, and I'll work with him on it, so we should have it done within a week.
Feel free to reach out to these...
Well, I've been getting a lot of very helpful emails and documents that helped me compares of it. I'm going to go look up the Cleveland one, I think that was referenced, about the shelter. So that'll be helpful.
And I appreciate you all coming and all of your thoughts. I think all of us here on council love our animals. Most of us are dog owners. Mine is Darren, but he's...
I'm allergic.
I know you are. I was going to point that out, but the rest of us are very passionate about our animals, so.
I'm not like a mean person. I just can't have them.
I know. Okay.
And if the folks who testified, I don't know if I have their emails, but if they would give their emails to Kim before they leave, I'd be happy to circulate the draft to them as well.
Okay.
I did that with the circus ordinance, so.
Sounds good. Sure. Well, he's going to a little bit of talk on that. So let's take a five-minute recess. Is that okay? And then we'll come back.
Yep.
All right, it's 8:07.